I'm here.
Good evening, people. Do we have everyone here? Let's go through a little bit of a roll call. We know the mayor's not here. Ms. Saros, are you with us?
Yes.
Ms. Cobb-Lumera, are you with us?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan, are you with us?
Yes.
Mr. Kacoris, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Chafin and myself are up at the Colbert School. So with that, I call to order the Monday, August 31st, 2020, school committee meeting. Our first order of business is an update on the fall reopening plan from our superintendent, Dr. Hackett.
Thank you, Mrs. Devon. Good evening, everybody. I'll take you through a few updates this evening. And I want to start by saying that Mayor Kacoris could not join us this evening. He's had the Tri-Town Virtual Candlelight Remembrance, who have been lost to substance use and has been on his calendar for quite some time now, and he has had that commitment. So just to let you know that he does send his regrets, but he is at that event. And you know that his chief of staff, Nicole Taub, is with us this evening in the audience. The mayor wanted her to be present and be able to hear the discussion as well. So welcome to Nicole. Also, wanted to mention, as we get started here, tonight I'm going to talk about a few things, again, communication and the surveys, some of the results that have come in, facilities and operations, as well as provide an update on remote plans. But before I start, there's been apparently quite a bit of activity in social media land, which I try to avoid at all costs, around a few things, but more, some of it around the teacher contract negotiations. And what I, well, I can't speak publicly about negotiations because they are done in private. What I can say is that we are still at the table. We are meeting again tomorrow for session. We've made progress and, you know, I am hopeful and remain hopeful that we will come to a good settlement and agreement. So I just wanted to make that statement so that everyone's aware that any of the rumors that are out there around what's happened or what's not happened, nothing has happened until it's made public. So thank you for indulging me on that. Also, just a reminder, we are getting a lot of questions now that are kind of repetitive. For those of you who may be kind of joining us a little late in this process, certainly understand people being busy with family and other commitments over the course of the summer. But just a reminder, the BraintreeSchools.org website forward slash reopening is available and you can watch every single meeting, every single minute of every single meeting, until you just can't stand it anymore. So you take your time and go through those. You're welcome to do that. So in terms of communication, upcoming staff meetings, we just finished a staff meeting last, I don't remember what day it is today, but last week, we had several sessions with staff. And we do, as promised, have the upcoming sessions for parents. We've done it based on grade spans once again, that those are tomorrow. This information's been out there for a while. Tomorrow from 4:00 to 4:55, 5:00 to 5:55, and 6:00 to 6:55, pre-K through 4, middle schools, grades 5 through 8, though, we're going to include the 5th grade in that session, and grades 9 through 12. We also will be hosting a special education informational session on Thursday, the 3rd, from 6:30 to 7:30. And once again, if you'd like to register for those sessions, you can visit our website, BraintreeSchools.org/reopening. So with that, I'm going to give the mic over here to Superintendent Lee to talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing over these professional development days that we have started actually as of today. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. I just want to walk you through one of the schedules of the 10 days of professional development that we have planned for staff. And start with this slide, they just kind of highlight some things that we have already talked about with you as far as priorities for the 10 days that we have. So as you know, all staff members need to be trained in COVID and the protocols that we need to use to maintain a safe environment for all our students. And that is work that all staff members will be experiencing tomorrow is part of our overall plan. So our nursing staff, led by Jeanne Absali, have put together all the materials that staff will need to learn how to effectively keep themselves and our students safe. And that is a huge part of what we're doing during this professional development. At the same time, as you all know, this coming fall will be a lot of remote learning, but very different from that of the spring. So a lot more synchronous instruction using Google Meet as our platform. And so to make sure that our staff has the best knowledge in terms of how to effectively use that with their instruction, we're bringing in two vendors that we've worked with before. One is called Teaching Learning Alliance, TLA for short. This is an organization that's done a lot of work with us over the last couple of years, as you recall, with the workshop model, which is a writing and math program that we implemented in the elementary level. So we have a great familiarity with their work and have been very impressed with their work in the past. We're also engaging with RBT, or Research for Better Teaching, which is a little bit more appropriate for our upper grade levels, and they will be working with grades 5 to 8 on workshops, again, surrounding how do we best use remote practices to make sure our kids are getting the best instruction possible. At the same time, in that remote environment, we have a lot of new technology that we need to make sure that we are familiar with and proficient with. We've talked in several school committee meetings about Class Link and Parent Square, which are some communication tools and some ways to help students get on to certain applications more seamlessly via a single sign-on. So we'll have training for all our staff around that. And then what I'm going to spend a couple of minutes on, which we've talked about before, is DreamBox. And Dr. Hackett, if you don't mind just running it and I'll jump in afterwards. Need some sound.
Okay, hold on just a second here. This is an awful lot for me to manage.
I have tremendous faith in you, though.
You know I'm very limited.
Andrew's about eight feet from you.
With a mask on, I just want to add that. We can't do it that way. How do we do it?
There's a setting. Andrew can help you.
Please hold. Andrew's going to come to the rescue here.
It's like the Wizard of Oz. He's the guy behind the curtain.
You don't even pay attention to him.
If it's too problematic, Dr. Hackett, I can just walk us through it verbally.
He's got it.
Of course he does.
What do students think about when they use DreamBox learning math? They think about where they're headed, what they should learn, and when they could use some practice. They think about who they are and the personal progress they're making. They think about how numbers work and why math makes sense. When they have to make a decision or even have as many as 100 options to choose from, they think critically and have their own ideas. They think it's worth celebrating their progress and how nice it is that they're not doing the same thing at the same time on the same day as everyone else in their class. They realize math gives them tools to show what they are really thinking. They know there are many ways to solve a problem and believe they are the heroes who can figure out great ways to tame monstrous math problems. They think about numbers in ways that can't be done with a pencil and paper as they interact with digital tools and games to understand the beauty of mathematics. They think mental division is easy and that adding negative fractions and decimals can be fun, not hard. They think about important math concepts, uncovering ideas to understand more deeply. As they figure things out on their own, they don't think they have to wait for someone else to show them what or how to think. Most importantly, when students are welcomed into DreamBox learning, they think for themselves. Because when they think about it, math just makes sense.
Thank you, Andrew. And I highlight this piece of software. Obviously, the district as a whole has done a lot of work exploring different software packages to find the right ones for us. And DreamBox is an example of software that students can use when we might be doing something asynchronously, but it's not a complete work-by-yourself type of scenario. So this type of software is adaptive, meaning it learns from the student what he or her, he or she knows about the mathematical problems. In this particular software, every single minute, the program analyzes over 800 bits of information about the student's progress to make sure that the next types of questions are most appropriate for where they currently are related to the curriculum. In addition, it links to testing that we do for students. We use NWEA as an assessment tool for mathematics in the elementary level. And that information gets fed directly into software such as DreamBox, which helps that software, again, target the skill set that the students need to focus on as they learn. So I just wanted to use this as a highlight of some of the software that we've purchased and have prepared to go out when we're working in a remote setting. Literacy Pro is another one that I've mentioned in previous school committee meetings, but there are a host of others as well. So it is not the old software that might have been used back in the spring. This represents the latest and the greatest that's out there. And again, can be customized to the individual student who is working with this software in a way that previously was unavailable to us. So I wanted just to show you that, to give you some flavor of the type of new software that's coming online this fall. Latest is during the 10-day period of professional development, Julie Love is coming to present to our staff. Dr. Love will do some work around social and emotional learning and trauma-informed strategies. That's another extended conversation we have had as a district about the needs of our students as they return from an extended closure in their time at home that could have incorporated several things that could be really troubling for kids. And as they try to assimilate themselves back into school, we want to be in a position to fully support them. And this professional development will help us with that. Another highlight of the professional development time is around cultural responsiveness. This is work we've done for several years, but it's work that we will continue over the course of this year. You know, our leadership team has all been reading the book. So you want to talk about race. But at the same time, at the end of last week, we put out a survey to all our families of color, asking them about their experiences in the Braintree Public School system. And we will begin to use this feedback to begin conversations internally about how can we make our schools more welcoming? How can we make our schools more inclusive? And how can we make our schools more successful for all students? This is just a really well-color-coded map of the 10-day period. Thank you, Matt Sartell, Director of Music. But this is the elementary PD schedule. So if you take a look at it, it's thought through all the way up to 9:15. It has a lot of curriculum work that we will be doing with, under our directors and with building principals to adjust our curriculum, to reflect the closure that we had in the spring and be prepared to really begin in earnest when the students return to us. But at the same time, you can see embedded in it some of those highlights that I mentioned on the last slide as we prepare for students to return, for faculty to come back and put ourselves in the best position moving forward. So again, this is only the elementary schedule. There's a very similar one for both the middle school level and the high school level, which was all developed by our entire leadership team. And we're looking forward to the work. Thank you, Dr. Hackett.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We did several surveys. Just going to give you an update on the data that we've received. We did show this last time, but we, the data that we're going to see right now is as of today. We had surveys were sent out August 25th and August 31st. Pre-K response rate was over 75%, which is excellent. 9 through 12 response was 60, over 60%, which is also excellent. We clearly need to make sure that we get responses from everyone. So as we speak and as of today, principals, assistant principals, office staff, guidance staff are reaching out to the families we have not heard yet from to make sure that we know what their, what their choice, what their preference is in terms of whether they would want to go with our full remote or participate in the hybrid programs or specialized program. As of right now, pre-K through 8, survey data breaks down like this. We have 27.3% of our students and families are looking to go with a full remote model. 68% are looking to go with hybrid. And a specialized program population is 3.3%. The red, again, represents our homeschool population. So a fairly larger portion of our students than we expected are looking to go full remote to start the school year with. And just to remind everybody that we will allow some transition points between those who start full remote and would like to go into hybrid. And for those who start hybrid and like, would like to go into full remote, but that work and those communications would need to happen with the building principal. And we'll find the appropriate transition point for your students to make that transition. Pre-K through 8 survey results, again, these are students enrolled, enrolling in remote learning by school, by grade. Actually, this is by grade. And this looks fairly similar in terms of the distribution as we saw last time with grade 2 having the majority of the full remote students overall. That number's higher than our other grade levels. Grade 8 is also fairly high, but for the most part is fairly evenly distributed. And this is by school. Again, you can see we have a couple of schools that are, have a few more students going full remote than other schools, but no real big surprises. And we will talk a little bit about how that breaks down a little bit later. Grade 9 through 12, survey results. This is the first time, I believe, we've seen these in public. We have 20.6% of our students indicating that they would like to go remote. Again, this is out of a 60% return, 7% specialized program, and then 76.2% opting for hybrid. Once again, students enrolling in remote learning by grade. You can see that grade 11 is a little higher than the other grade levels, but no real big surprises and decent distribution. So with that, I want to provide an update on our facilities and operations. We've also done some work around transportation. We spoke last time. These are the most updated data for pre-K through 8. If you remember, our initial charge was to make sure that we have covered our state mandated requirement of providing transportation for students who live more than two miles away from school in grades 1 through 6. And I'll show you in just a second how that breaks down. Right now, based on these data, we have 28% of our students who will be using the bus in pre-K through 8, and 72% will not be using the bus. So what we know right now is we have, we have completed the routing for the state minimum requirement of grades 1 through 6 from more than two miles from school. It includes time for disinfecting the buses in between runs. That's about a 10-minute process. And what we know right now, based on this population, again, more than two miles from school, grades 1 through 6, is that the school start and end times will be the same as last year. So we'll be operating on the early release day schedule. You can find that on our website as well with a calendar, but we'll be sending out a little bit more detailed information later on. Our next steps and currently in progress right now is we are trying to create an independent kindergarten run to and from school, both inadequate and potentially the homeschools as well, keeping the, keeping the kindergarten students out of the elementary runs to the homeschools. Independent meaning, we generally, historically, as you know, bring kindergarten students to their homeschool, and then we have them board a different bus to bring them to inadequate. We're trying for all kinds of reasons, not the least of which is disinfecting and trying to decrease the amount of time our students are on the bus. We are trying to eliminate that. We're trying to create a run that will happen after the elementary run is over, which obviously will have an impact on the start time for our kindergarten students. You should know that fairly soon, I would say by the end of the week. And we will be able to release that information as to what the impact is on school start times for our half-day kindergarten program. Remember, we're doing half-day only, and we've broken into two cohorts for that. We will then be evaluating our ability to expand our service to grades 7 and 8, and then 9 through 12, again, at the two-mile or more rate level, I'm sorry. Because what we need to make sure we don't do is overcommit our transportation resources in, in the time, in the hope of the time that we're going to be able to expand our programming from half-day in-person days to full days or any other kind of adjustments that we hope to be able to make as we move forward through the course of the school year. We don't want to start with transportation and then not be able to provide it. We also will continue to look to see if we can lower that minimum a little bit to include some additional transportation options, but we've got to start here first. So that is good news from the standpoint that we know we can do it. And it's good news from the standpoint that now we can move into a couple of different questions around transportation. This is the elementary bus needs right now. Hollis is, has the majority of students who, are the ones who are going to ride the bus. As mentioned earlier, Hollis has more students who would be riding the bus than other schools, Highlands to follow, and then again, a fairly even distribution across the board. This is the middle school. This would be grades 7 through 8 included in this. At this point, we've only, we've only planned for grade 6 at the middle school, 5, 6 at East, and grade 6 at South. We'll continue to look at 7, 8 as we move forward. So I just want to say a few things about our facilities assessment because I understand that's been a fairly hot topic or topic of conversation in different circles as well. And I just want to clarify a few things and create a few things, one of which is the leading point of this is that the town of Braintree Health and Building Departments are the final authority on our occupancy of our school buildings.
Can you say that again, please, for me? Please?
Okay. I'm not going to say it again now. Now you got me all nervous.
Don't understand what I meant.
I do. So when we do all this planning and everything that follows and throughout this process, we have been in close coordination with Mary Beth McGrath as the director, the Health and Building Department through the mayor's office, and talking about our plans. The, the initial plans that we presented in terms of six-foot social, physical distancing, mask-wearing, all of those protocols have already been approved by the Health Department and supported by the Health Department. And from the standpoint of the actual safety and health of the buildings and how we occupy the spaces, that has been already received approval, and we would have known it had not. So whatever we present to you as plans, hopefully people can understand that that process has already taken place. There's nothing holding us back at this point from a, the perspective of the town's Health Department from doing and implementing the plans that we have put in front of you. The buildings are safe. I want to reiterate that. The goal is to enhance health and safety due to a global pandemic. We are in a different time. We are not worried about meeting the minimum requirements around our, our schools from the standpoint of any kind of health and safety code. What we are trying to do is enhance our health and safety protocols in the building itself, the buildings themselves, due to the pandemic. This is obviously a different time. Just a little bit about standards versus guidance. There is guidance, but there are no new standards or requirements for HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, due to COVID from any agency or any organization. So there are still the fundamental standards and expectations. The majority of those that we follow come from the Massachusetts Department of Health. They are the ones who, when there's an issue, we, someone wants to have them come in and inspect or check one of our buildings for an issue. They are the governing body and authority in coordination with the Braintree Health and Building Departments as well. But I just wanted to be clear that the guidance that we're seeing from CDC or the, from other agencies is just that, it's guidance. There's an understanding, even through that guidance and through those organizations, that you cannot take 50, 60, 70-year-old buildings and make them operate like they're brand-new. So the question is, the point is, we need to maximize all that we can in terms of implementation of guidance that we are able to implement in the buildings that we have. That's why there are all kinds of other mitigation strategies, which I'll talk about in a second. So what we know about our buildings right now is the HVAC systems are operational. We have had that data since the late May. That, that was done through our ESCO Energy Savings Project through a company called Naresco. They went through every one of our buildings with, with the exception of South because we were anticipating a potential building project, and East because we were under construction. All of the schools they went through, they checked every single component of our HVAC systems, and all are operational, all were repaired, and all are fixed. And we continue to make repairs and, and maintain as we move forward. We will also, as a mitigation strategy, we will be adjusting the operational hours of our equipment. We'll be running our equipment longer to introduce fresh air in a longer period of time. The goal is to increase outdoor ventilation through outdoor dampers. Windows are a very good source, as we might imagine, of outdoor fresh air. We can implement portable air cleaners with filtration systems in those rooms that we want to increase or enhance the air exchange rates. And we can take classrooms offline if needed and utilize our large spaces. So we've not scheduled any of our large spaces, our gymnasiums, our cafeterias for any classroom use. And we did that for the reason of anticipating that we could have issues that we need to mitigate. So those spaces could be used as classroom spaces if needed. So those are some of the steps that we can take. In all of our buildings, most of our buildings, I should say, the classrooms have their own individual units within the classroom. So it's, it's really a self-contained system that has a unit exhaust system. So there may be cases where if there's an issue in one particular classroom that we need to take offline for a period of time, we can take that classroom offline and not shut down the entire building. We have some schools, including the high school, where a large percent of our classrooms at the high school are actually fed by and controlled by rooftop units. And I'll talk about that in a second. We also, and most importantly, and just want to remind everybody, you know, the guidance is to implement a collection of strategies, that, that it is not one thing that is going to make our buildings safer, our students and staff safer. It is the combination of many things. And none more important than that of them would be the physical distancing that we stuck to of six feet, which we did, you know, we got some feedback on. Some people thought we should not be at six feet. We should be at three feet, as the CDC was saying. It was also provided by DESI that they felt we should be building off of three feet. We stayed with six feet in coordination with the town Health Department. We've not changed that. That pretty much automatically reduces the number of our students in our buildings by 50% on any given day. That is a huge mitigation strategy because, because obviously, reduction of people within a space is an important component of mitigating the spread of virus. We have implemented hybrid schedules and cohorting. That is to allow us to be able to maintain the, our ability to keep students apart, to maintain the six feet of social distancing. We've also reduced the amount of time that our staff and students are actually going to be in the buildings. Where, as you know, we're going to go with a half-day of school. We have mask requirements. We're requiring parents to screen their children before they put them on the bus, before they bring them to school. We are not going to be doing any large group gatherings. Again, another major component of the potential for any kind of infectious spread, including our cafeterias and gymnasiums for the purposes of food. We're not serving lunch in the cafeteria. We're not serving in the gymnasium. Students will have their masks on during those times, and they will be taking a lunch to go with them on the way home. That's our starting point. We would like to be able to expand on that as we move forward over the course of the year. We also have purchased and we have trained our custodials staff in cleaning protocols, and we're using the recommended, FDA-recommended cleaning solutions for disinfecting. and we're using the recommended, FDA-recommended cleaning solutions for disinfectance for protocol, for, I'm sorry, for COVID. And we've also, as you have seen, outlined our quarantine protocols, again in coordination with our nurses as, as well as the Town of Braintree Health Department. Those mitigation strategies, according to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, are even more important than the issues and questions we're asking around our HVAC systems. So with that, why are we doing the air exchange testing? We're doing the air exchange testing so that we can have data on what the levels of fresh air exchange is within our buildings, in our, in our, in our classrooms. The purpose of that, because it's not required, is to allow us to target any kind of mitigation strategies, mitigation strategies that might be needed. That could be on a classroom basis, it could be on a school-wide basis if necessary. The building assessments will be completed by the week of September 7th and they will be released as they become available. So as it stands right now, we're being told by one of the two companies we're using that they can, they can assess a building within about a day and turn a report around in a day to two days. And they, we have two companies working at the same time. We will be implementing mitigation strategies as needed based on conversations with those companies as they go through their work. You know, we are not anticipating that we're going to, we're not going to be in a position, we're going to wait for any particular report to come back to say before whether we can really open the building or not. We are going to be planning to open our buildings.
Schedule.
Allowed. And again, the Town of Braintree Health and Building Departments are the final authority on occupancy. So they will also be receiving all this data. We'll make this data public, we'll put it on our website and it'll be part of our conversation, ongoing conversations with families and with teachers and staff. So with all that, we are right now in a position where we are recommending that we start Braintree High School in full remote mode with a target return date of Tuesday, October 13th. There are a few reasons why we are recommending this. It's not of surprise. We've been talking about our interior classrooms for months now. The interior classrooms do not have windows, so our mitigation strategies are more limited in those spaces. They unfortunately, in some ways, represent about 30% of our academic rooms. So without those classrooms online, we are not able to provide the hybrid programming that we've talked about up to this point. We have not utilized any of our large spaces. That could be a combination of strategies that we use if, if some of the interior classrooms eventually have to be taken offline. The interior classrooms are serviced by rooftop units. They are not individual classroom units. So the units themselves service multiple classrooms within the wing. That becomes a little bit more of a challenge from the standpoint of being able to make modifications to the system, to, to the rooms in which those, that system services. We are having, we're still having assessments done on what we can do with our rooftop units to enhance their, their fresh air exchange. And there are other mitigation strategies that we are, we are going to be implementing over time as well to those interior classrooms. Bottom line is we need more time. Fortunately, the exterior classrooms have self-contained unit event systems that are easier to control and modify. We have not yet made determinations around the location for pre-K and special education programs, but this decision or this recommendation to start in full remote for the high school and then go to hybrid on, with a target date of going hybrid on Tuesday, October 13th, does not, does not apply to pre-K and special education. We will either have those programs within the high school, again, remembering that the exterior rooms have self-contained unit event systems that we can modify more quickly and more easily and/or we could potentially use space elsewhere. So that information will be coming out later this week, but I will be making the recommendation to the school committee tonight for your consideration of starting full remote. I have spoken to the mayor at length. The mayor is supportive of this decision. He understands the challenges and supportive of us doing what we need to do, obviously, to make sure that we are comfortable and confident that we are doing everything we can to enter our buildings in a way that have, we've thought about enhancing how we're dealing with COVID and COVID spread in, in, in this case specifically related to our air exchange in our interior classrooms. So I'm sure there probably might be some questions, but I just want to keep going because given the fact that we are making that recommendation, we also felt it's going to be important for us to come back to you again and remind you what a full remote opening plan will look like for Braintree High School. And with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Next slide, please. Back up. I think we missed a slide. Jump ahead one, please.
Yep.
The amendment to.
So this is a schedule the school committee has seen before because what we are able to do going full remote at the high school is to utilize the hybrid schedule so that come October 13th or whenever it's appropriate, when we transition back into the building, we can still utilize that. So again, this is a schedule that you've seen before. This is, in essence, the hybrid schedule that was presented. As you can see, it's a six-period day that rotates between Monday and Tuesday and then Thursday and Friday with Wednesday an opportunity for some more asynchronous work, but also some synchronous activities through the school and some guidance office hours, academic support periods for special education students and PE where needed. So there really is no substantive change in terms of the overall schedule. It's just delivered remotely as opposed to being in person on the days that we had previously identified. So this schedule would allow for a smooth transition when it's appropriate to go back to the hybrid schedule. Next slide, please. I won't read the whole thing to you, but as I have, you know, we've previously discussed, although the, the learning is synchronous, we will again be taking attendance. That is a requirement. As you know, grades will be assigned this year as they typically or traditionally were. There will be, for every single period, some level of synchronous instruction. We, again, have talked about the 3.5 hours of a recommendation in terms of synchronous instruction, but we would expect teachers to be delivering something synchronously between 10 and 35 minutes of a given period, really driven by the lesson they are presenting that day and the needs of that particular lesson. You know, there are teacher-led activities, independent assignments, so the nature of the lesson will again drive things. We will use not only Google Meet, but Google Classroom, which has been a prevalent platform at the high school for several years. On Wednesday, as I mentioned, it is more of an asynchronous approach to the academics. However, there's still a lot of synchronous opportunities for students. You know, I mentioned advisories and clubs, office hours for teachers to provide specific support to students who might have questions, also gives them the opportunity to reach out to families as needed. And certainly at the high school level, we do things like assemblies and things of that nature and as needed, we could do them remotely using the afternoon sessions of the day. I had explained previously, but I'll mention it again, that it is a six-period schedule. We have, most of our students only take five courses, so that six course, if you will, typically is PE. However, we do have a population of students who take six academic classes beyond PE and so PE would actually fit into that Wednesday afternoon block. All of this is, is again, been presented before as part of the hybrid model. The only substantive difference is the fact that all the instruction would be remote until it is deemed appropriate, appropriate for us to return to the school. I think that's it, Dr. Hackett.
You want to continue with Celine?
Certainly. Again, these are more reminders, you know, that there were questions or had been questions about how we are cohorting as a district, as presented at the last meeting. The Monday and Tuesday for those families, other than the high school, who would be coming to school in a hybrid model, the Monday and Tuesday sessions would be for those with last name beginning A through LE. And Thursday and Friday in person would be for those families with last names LI through Z. As we have mentioned several times, we will make adjustments for our students with different last names who live in the same home to make sure that they can, you know, plan accordingly as a family. This is a slide much more about distribution of technology. Obviously, we need all of our students to have access to reliable technology. You know, there is acceptable devices. It's all on the website as well in terms of exactly what you would need to have in order to participate. Chromebook loaners are being distributed this week at Braintree High School via signup and sent via email starting on 9/1, which is tomorrow. And you can see the email address or the, sorry, the website address to go and set up an appointment for that. As we had, again, previously mentioned, personal devices that will be used for school do need to be added to our school network. And so students in grades five to 12, you know, loaners are available as described, acceptable devices are Chromebooks, laptops and MacBooks. But again, to get onto our network, we want to make sure you have access to it. Signups are available starting tomorrow. Again, the same website address to go to, grades five and eight on Tuesday, the first, grades nine and 12 beginning on Tuesday, 9/8. So, you know, the primary goal is to make sure that all of our students have access to reliable technology, which will allow them to participate in the remote segments of our plan. And our tech department is ready and able to help those students who either need a device or need to get their device onto our network. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And again, before I turn over to the chair again, just a reminder that tomorrow we have three sessions for parents by grade span, as well as on Thursday, we have a special education informational session on Thursday, the third, from 6:30 to 7:30. And once again, you can find all this information and more than you want on their website, So with that, Mr. Chair, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Doctor. Any comments or questions from people on the school committee, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, please.
By all means, Mr. Kukoris.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Thank you, Mr. Lee. I appreciate the updates and we obviously appreciate all the work that has gone into getting this plan in motion. I think there's a few things, I'd like to make a couple of comments and then I have a question. I think there's a few things worth reiterating from the presentation and that is, our buildings are ready and we expect to open them on 9/16. I think that it's important that we kind of separate the stories and the rumors that are, that have been circulating around and understand that our Health Department is the, the people that are first and foremost in giving us the approval to open the buildings. And it sounds like that's where we are, that's where we were a couple of weeks ago when we met and approved the plan. So I'm happy to hear that things are moving ahead and, you know, we're working hard at that. I think it's also important to understand that the virus is not in our buildings. It's really going to be the behavior of the people that come in and out of the building and that includes everyone, staff, parents, you know, filling the parent screening form out correctly. So, you know, if we all do our part, I think we will have a very safe return to school and hopefully we'll have a safe return to more than hybrid. So, you know, I appreciate the work that everyone's done and I hope that we'll continue to do the work, both as parents and as staff, to be ready for the first day of school. I have one question, Dr. Hackett or Mr. Lee, on the high school going fully remote for the first, I guess, the first month, which I understand the reason that we're pushing things back. When we say that there'll be synchronous learning, I would expect that that synchronous learning would be completely, you know, every day for the whole day since the school will be completely remote. Am I misunderstanding the schedule or, because I saw one slide that said that and one that I thought said something a little different?
So very similar ways that we've described synchronous instruction in any one of our classes and as I'm sure you know, that our classrooms today or a year ago did not involve the teacher standing in front of a class speaking for 50 minutes. There's a part that is direct instruction. There's a lot of work that's collaborative among students and certain assignments that kids do. So for every period, yes, there would be an element of synchronous instruction and how long that synchronous teacher-led conversation would go would really be dependent upon the lesson, but every period allows for that, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. And, and just the last comment. I think the other thing that came in the DESI guidance that I very much agree with is that when we have synchronous learning, that we should have teachers in classrooms as much as possible, even when we're on a remote day. I think it's important, especially in the younger grades, with familiarity to a classroom rather than a remote situation. So I hope we'll, we'll keep that guidance in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Are there any other comments or questions from the school committee?
I do.
By all means, Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I actually wanted to speak out about that DESI guidance as well. I would like to ring in with an opinion that we do not follow that guidance. I feel that, you know, it puts teacher, it puts teachers in an extremely difficult situation. We're asking them to do their jobs and do them well and also do them possibly without the advantage of any childcare. We have to understand that teachers are human beings. They're professionals as well. They're going to do their job to the best of their abilities and asking them to come into a building just so that, excuse me, a child can maybe see them in a classroom setting. I feel like, you know, that's a terrible ask and I really hope that we don't do that to our teacher population. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Any other comments or questions from the school committee? Hearing none. I believe a motion has to be put forth in second and with a roll call vote as far as amending our start plan because of our issue with the high school.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. And I will amend and they will keep it the old way. Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We look forward to seeing a more detailed plan on how we're going to bring that school, shall we say, with, with the, our different amenities as far as helping with that, those issues.
We'll keep you up to date.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay. Moving on to our, our number three, which is our report from the Policy and Education Subcommittee, which is chaired by Ms. Dolan. Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'll have it for about two seconds before I pass the buck right off to our friend, Dr. Hackett. But one of the topics that we talked about last week was the amendment to the school calendar. And so there was a request to table the vote on that until this week so that any questions or concerns could be raised. So I'll give it to you, Dr. Hackett, but I suppose this is the time for anyone to bring that stuff up.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Just a quick review of this. Again, the first few days from, the first 10 days from Monday, the 31st, which is today, obviously, to Tuesday, the 15th, there are 10 professional development days in there. Those days are provided by the commissioner through an agreement with the MTA when the reduction was made to the number of student days from 180 student days to 170 student days. Those days were required to be front-loaded on the, the first half of the year for training and all that we're trying to accomplish is we reopen. The 16th, so we could, we were not allowed to start school any later than the 16th. So that is the first instructional day regardless of hybrid or full remote instruction. That kind of takes care of the month of September. I would ask that at this point, the kindergarten days and the preschool days be, just be held in abeyance and we, not, it's part of your motion to approve the calendar. We have to still work that out. So if you could just strike 9/16, 17 and both those times on 17 for kindergarten and preschool as part of your motion. Then in October, we have the one long weekend and again, we're targeting the transition to hybrid for the high school for that Tuesday, the 13th. In November, we have a teacher workshop day, which aligns to the presidential election that in that, and we will be using three schools, actually, the town clerk, Mr. Casey. Three high schools, South and East will be used for, as polling places for the election. We will not, we will have a teacher workshop day, so even though it would be a Tuesday in-person session for Cohort A, we will not be having students in person on that day. We will be using it as one of our two other workshop days that we have built into the calendar on a regular year. The 11th is Veterans Day. That's a Wednesday, so nobody loses in-person learning on that day. day. And then we have the Thanksgiving break. We move into December, and the recommendation in this calendar is that we go full-remote for all students, pre-K through 12, regardless of whether in hybrid or in person, I'm sorry, in hybrid or full-remote at that point, from the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, everyone goes full-remote, which allows us to get staff, students potentially out of our buildings for a couple of weeks for a lot of reasons. If that could be a transitional period where we might be able to do something else, where we can move some things, we can certainly continue to do our cleaning protocols, but also just being mindful that COVID is not the only chemical disease that we're going to be faced with as the flu season begins. We also, it might not be a bad idea to get everyone away from each other for a little bit. So that is the only part of the calendar for you to prove at this point. We've only included January through June, just to give you, you know, as we always do, what it looks like in general. We will come back to you in mid-November or so, when we start to get a better sense for how things are looking, and to see whether or not we need to make any adjustments for January through June. As it stands right now, with this calendar as it is, the last student day, last day of school for students would, if five snow days are used, would be June 22nd, it would be the 15th if we don't use any snow days, and then the last day for staff would be June 16th. That is inclusive of one teacher workshop day that is to be scheduled. So that is, the calendar is presented that I am recommending for your approval, the exceptions noted on the kindergarten and preschool notations for September 16, 7, and then in the two on the 17th. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the school committee on the schedule as it's been put forth for the first four months?
I do.
Please.
Actually, forgive me, it's not about the first four months, but I'm just curious about, someone asked me this and I wasn't able to answer it, possibly because I forgot what you said last time, but in terms of the snow days, under what circumstances where we are going to have the ability to be remote, would we end up taking a snow day?
So unlike other years where we're mainly in-person, I think the question that we have to ask ourselves is the value of in-person instruction, which I think we all agree, there's a lot of value in having our students in front of our staff. So I think we just need a little bit more time to think about that question. We certainly could cover those days in a full-remote mode, but depending on how snow days fall, if there's a lot of Monday, Tuesdays, for example, and not many Thursday, Fridays, if this does become a major inequity, I just think we need to kind of reserve the right to have that discussion.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Cobb-Lemare.
I just wanted to ask, I'm not sure if this was mentioned before, but is there a plan to have grade nine have an open house before they actually go into the school at some point?
So as we move forward with planning the reopening, to Mr. Devon's question, we will include that information as we move forward. So we certainly recognize that there's a need to do something with grade nine, maybe there's a need to do something with all grade levels as we transition back to what is not going to be a as familiar an environment as what we're used to. So we will bring those plans forward to you as they become available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lemare. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept this, what, this, this schedule as has been put forth today?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoras.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's a 6-0. Let's see, we are now moving into our executive session. We're considering to enter into executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategies for the contract negotiations, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, and then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this school committee because we won't be coming back. So for the, entering into executive session, roll call vote.
So moved.
We have a motion, excuse me, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoras.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, we will be going into executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoras.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This, this meeting as it is, is adjourned, we'll be going into executive session.